I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, March 5th, 2020. As is our custom, we'll begin with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Nation.
My Pledge of Allegiance. The citizens of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, a republic, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your old call, please.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Boland.
Here.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Present.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present. Thank you. As is our custom, we do allow 30 minutes of time for public comment on items that are not on our agenda this evening. However, prior to that, I would like to offer our sincere condolences to Karen Naster on the loss of his father last night. We do allow 30 minutes of public comment. I would ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone have anything to say that is not on the agenda? Welcome, Mr. Hyde.
My name is Donald Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I'm going to comment on something that is not on the agenda, yet it has everything to do with the agenda and you. In the news I've read, and after two years of vast debate, two years of discussion and not getting all the facts, we, you, and county council, all voted to spend the money on the new jail. And you managed to convince everybody, get the votes you wanted, to have the jail built behind the mall. Now, I was one of the people saying, "I'm against that," but we live in a democracy, majority rules. You won. Now, I read something interesting in a paper just the last couple of days that said that the jail will be delayed at least six months, if not a full year, over what they said it was going to happen because the ground that they chose was too wet and that they can't properly dig, finish, and mow, and pour the concrete, and get it to set right so it will be good at this time, and it's going to be a delay. Now, I'm not blaming anybody for that. I'm simply saying that was something that should have been thought about long before they ever got around to building. I believe that we're going to be talking about something later that is the same thing. I just want to point that out to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hyde. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Representative Shagley, Representative O'Neal. Saluting agenda was kind of surprising me, but as you probably know, the St. Patrick's Day Parade is March 14th, so it's at 1:00 on Ohio Street, in the St. Patrick's School. Please all turn up and enjoy the parade. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Cyrilene Youngblood. I live at 1503 East Dallas Drive, which is the southern part of Vigo County. I'm here to talk trash. My husband and I belong to the Society of Trashbaggers, amongst 830 members at this time. We had 300 new members within the past two weeks that joined through Facebook. Over the month of February, of known bags collected, 230 within the city and various parts of the county. My concern is the businesses that have the dumpsters out behind their facilities, that they are not securing the top of the dumpsters, which allows trash to blow out. A group of the Trashbaggers are going to be on Johnson Avenue, which is behind in the mall area, and I'm sure all of you have driven down that road. It is nasty. There's a few of the businesses in that area that their dumpsters are overflowing, so either they need bigger dumpsters, or they need to do something because what's happening is a lot of the trash is blowing then out onto the brush that's on the south side of Johnson. I guess my question to you is there an ordinance at this time that addresses businesses and their dumpsters, making sure that that trash is confined within the dumpster? If there is, is there a fine? I've heard that it's been discussed to raise the fines, but if something isn't being done the way it is now, raising the fines are not going to do anything if we're not issuing fines to these businesses. So I would just like to ask if a letter could be sent to these businesses concerning this. I know many of the Trashbaggers, I know my husband for a fact, he's out probably 30 to 35 hours a week picking up trash. And it's very discouraging whenever they do an area and then you go back within a few days and then maybe not as much trash is there, but there's still an abundance amount.
Thank you. Thanks for your hard work. Any other comments on non-agenda items? State your name and address, please.
I'm Kevin Southwood, at 1638 Seventh Avenue, Terre Haute. I'm just kind of wondering about, is it area planning idea to kill off all the other areas in Terre Haute except out there on the east side? You know, I'm concerned about everything's going to the east side, everything else is going to die. You know, it's just like the VA Center. You know, it's going out to the east side, you know. I'm a veteran, you know, it seems like you would have at least asked the veterans or their addresses in the city, where is the biggest percentage of the veterans live at? Northside, Central, West, you know, east, south, and make, and make, or at least maybe one or two areas, and then put that veterans center out there, you know, to serve the people of Terre Haute, you know. I probably assume it's because it's I-70 that it's closer to, you know, you know, but at the same time, you, the whole, the whole purpose of area planning is to help the city, not, not to kill the city for, for one section, you know. I think it's, I think it's a terrible thing, you know. I really think that, you know, the people in the central part of Terre Haute, North Terre Haute, West Terre Haute, they ought to get, they ought to get like a 20-year property tax exemption for anything that they're fixing on their house. They ought, they shouldn't have to pay no more taxes for that because no place is really doing anything for any section of the city. And, you know, it's all going to one designated area and, and everything else is just left aside. So if, if the city government, if the county government isn't doing something for all sections, then they shouldn't collect no more money on property taxes, you know, because until they meet the citizen's idea of trying to help their own community, they shouldn't make, "You've helped the community, we don't. You helped the community, we're going to charge you extra taxes," you know.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on. Corrections to the Journal?
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
I did not receive any.
Reports from city officials?
I did not receive any.
Reports from the Board of Public Works?
I did not receive any.
Reports from standing committees?
I don't believe there are any.
Reports from non-standing committees?
Again, I don't believe there are any.
Items previously tabled?
We have one. General Ordinance 1, 2020, amending City Code, Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10-207, variance from C-9 requirements.
I would like to, at this point in time, recognize Councilman Nation.
Thanks, George. As the petitioner for this, I've brought it forward, and I'm going to read from a statement that I wrote to kick this all off. I think that'll be better for everybody than me just doing it off the cuff. We all found out that the CIB is interested in buying the Vigo County School Corporation property and using it for surface parking by reading about it in the newspaper in early December. I filed General Ordinance 1 because all I was hearing were short-term fixes to the parking problem created by dropping the west parking garage from the CIB's plan for the convention center. I believe that we need to have a long-term vision for a building of substance at Seventh and Wabash, not a surface parking lot, that will only serve the hotel across the street. If we truly want the convention center built downtown, though, the parking problem must be solved. I'm willing to let the Vigo County School Corporation property be used as a surface parking lot for two or three years, with the understanding that we will continue to work on building a garage that will serve the Hilton Garden Inn and other neighborhood needs. Last Saturday's listening session at the Vigo County Public Library, which many of you attended, as I look out into the audience, resulted in some good ideas, notably that we should focus on building a multi-story garage with ground floor retail space and maybe a floor or two of office space. There was also interest in getting more bids and alternatives for a garage north of the Hilton Garden Inn. Mayor Bennett has told me that building a garage either at Seventh and Cherry or at Seventh and Wabash is his goal, too. That was earlier today. I was glad to hear it. I've shared my summary and observations of last Saturday's listening session with my fellow city council members, Mayor Bennett and Steve Witt. Next, I'll share them with the county council and the CIB. Our findings were written today in the Tribune-Star. I feel like we've made progress in identifying what the community wants to happen with the school corporation property at the crossroads of America. In short, we want it respected, and we want it to contribute to moving the whole downtown forward. My fellow elected officials get that. I certainly do, too. Another issue that was raised Saturday is that our Board of Zoning Appeals may not be able to grant the variance needed to use the school corporation property for surface parking. The argument boils down to the question of whether the lot being planned is a use or a development standard. Our code refers to parking as a use. The BZA cannot grant variances on a use. They can on development standards. That said, I'm not a lawyer, and I realize that lawyers and perhaps judges will make the final determination, not city council members. For all of these reasons, I propose that General Ordinance 1 be withdrawn tonight. That'll give the CIB and our redevelopment commission the ability to move forward with convention center construction while we collectively decide what to build on the school corporation property and how to fund it. I think that ultimately, our redevelopment commission should own the school corporation property. They have built both of the garages that we have downtown, and they administer the TIF funds that are likely to pay for this third garage. That said, the council can't dictate that the redevelopment commission will take on this effort. Having this public conversation has made it clear what citizens value, though, and I have been assured by Mayor Bennett that he shares the goal of developing a multi-story structure at Seventh and Wabash that includes stacked parking. I can accept that, and I hope that my fellow citizens can, too. And I stand ready to continue to working with, to continue working with them, the CIB, and the citizens of Terre Haute to reach that shared goal. That's the end of my statement.
Okay. Did you want to make the motion now, or did you want me to?
No, I think that there are a lot of people here who want to talk about this. I think that we should go through all of the steps of this because my fellow council members may have other questions or ideas about this, too.
All right. With that said, I would ask that, if there is a representative here, I know there are, from the CIB, to answer questions if necessary. I would ask, since he, since Councilman Nation has indicated that he's going to withdraw this ordinance, so that means there will not be a vote on this ordinance this evening other than the vote to withdraw. So if there's anyone that's on this list that would still like to make comments, I will, of course, allow it. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or under, and that you have respect for one another's views. Everybody has a right to their opinion, whether they, you agree with them or not. It's not a basketball game. We're not here to cheer for our team and boo for the other. So please make sure that you are courteous and respectful to one another. With that said, I will go down the list, and again, I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or under. Judith Peter?
Yes, sir, I'm Judith Peter. I have lived here in Terre Haute for a total now of 13 months, and I could probably give you days and weeks, too. I grew up in Oklahoma, and one of the things that I thought about, about more downtown on-street parking when it was, when I first heard about it, was what happened to the little towns in Oklahoma after a tornado blew through, and there was just nothing, nothing left. So that there was a lot of empty land, and eventually there were a lot of empty buildings. People moved out. Businesses moved out. I would really hate to see that happen here in Terre Haute. This is a lovely town. It has a wonderful history. My son has spent the last 13 months giving me the history, and so I know that it's a great place. But I, I think that, going back to the first idea that Representative, let's see, how do I address you?
Nation.
Dr., it's not doctor, it's Mr. Nations, okay? I think his first idea was, was very valid, and I think it should be considered very respectfully because it's, it's something that, when you drive through a town and most of the downtown is surrounded by empty spaces, it looks as though we're not trying to do anything to keep our town going. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. David Peter. And if I call your name and you don't wish to comment, that's fine.
Good evening. I have lived here now for, well, I can remember when Judith Anderson sat there in that chair years ago. I've seen changes come and go in Terre Haute, but the more things change, the more they stay the same. You know, there've been many plans for many things, but very few of the plans have come to fruition, whether this is the, using the facade from the Terre Haute House to the Terre Haute House, which did not happen, to many of the other things that have started and not occurred. I'm troubled again by the desire for parking on the street. It's hard to park anywhere, especially as a disabled vet here in town, and trying to find spots in any parking lot can be problematic in and of itself. While pulling this may be an admirable way to go, I think that the council should step up and make the action and do what you have been elected to do. Represent us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don Hyde?
Now, Mr. Nation, you took away four, three of the four problems I was going to address. So let me address the fourth problem. There is no way in my mind, in any way, shape, or form, I can justify that the hotel at Seventh and Wabash be allowed to purchase public land, which is what they're trying to purchase, that was built, bought, built, and forced upon with the federal and state law, where you can't deny schools or public buildings, like a library, like the courthouse, like a jail. You can't hold them, stop them from building there. So they want to build on private land. Us taxpayers actually own that land, let's be clear on that. They want to build a private, they want to buy some and build a private flat parking lot at Seventh and Wabash. My God, what a joke. It is only going to benefit them. Now, my other problem was, and I'll repeat what I was going to say anyway, they agreed, and the only reason this board voted to agree on building the Dargon Convention Center was because this hotel, which I might add is one of the, is not in financial trouble at all, they're making money. They're making so much money that they're wanting to buy a Hallman Building, gut it out, and turn it into a hotel because of where their hotel is located. It is located in downtown Terre Haute, literally at the crossroads of America. You cannot buy advertisement. It's free where they're at, and they're not going to lose money at all, no matter how this thing goes out. But they agreed that they would take their little square parking lot and they would build a high-rise parking lot there. Now, all of a sudden, I've got a little bit of art skills and took the classes in other things, yes, it's small, but can they build a high-rise parking lot there? Oh, yes, they can. There's two ways to do it. They don't want to do either way because it's a little more expensive because of the size. Because, and also, I believe also, as artists, they don't want to block the forest, which is what they have to do to build right, because of the view of their hotel. They want the people that come to the hotel to go look out the window and see the, see the ISU campus. Now, let's, let's face it, why are they not losing money?
Mr. Hyde, I need you to wrap up.
All right, I'm wrapping up.
I have other people that need to talk.
My reason not losing money is there aren't, most of the customers that come and stay at that hotel are coming to visit ISU. The other one-third are visiting Terre Haute, all of which means that hotel is not losing money. They don't need our property. They don't need, they need to keep their word. That's the way I look at it. It's not like they're hurting for money. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kevin Southwood.
I don't want to see no business have their right to that property at Seventh and Wabash. You know, to me, a business is authoritarian just by the nature of owners, ownership, you know, so we could have, if a business opens it up, you know, we could have sparklers and bottle rockets, and let's go downtown and watch how many people get arrested for trespassing, or let's count how many cars can be towed away from that business's parking lot, you know. Or you have a business there that is a one-natured business, and then nothing else but attracts the people to that business goes to that business. And, and so I've said before, I'd like to see it an open lot, where you could have a whole host of different events there that would have multiple attraction levels for a multiple grade of people, you know, you know. I said before, you could have car shows there, you know, you could even have them down at Gilbert Park, you know, you could have a rock band up, up there, you could have the Bean Dinner, the Blues Festival, you could have a country band down at Gilbert Park, you know, while you're having the same events, so people could walk up and down there, you know, close off 13th Street, they want to drive around, they can go 3rd or 25th Street, doesn't matter. But you could have a, a, an area where a whole host of people could go down there with different things that might attract people and help them understand different things, you know, rather than it's a business for a business, and if, if you're not enthralled with a business, you don't care, you know, but, you know, having a multiple different things that, that could have access to that one location, it, it would attract a hell of lot more people than a motel would, or any other business. That's what I feel.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your comments. Dean Branson?
Yeah.
You've got, okay. Rosemary Scott? I'm sorry. Rosemarie.
It's okay. Do you need my name and my address? I forget your protocol.
Yeah, name and address, please.
Okay. Rosemarie Scott, 209 Highland Court, Terre Haute, Indiana. I do not live in the city limits, but I'm a resident of Vigo County. I'm going to change a little bit of what I said per what Todd said earlier. You're not going to vote tonight, but I, I want you to go back to, I think, 1970. I was Googling today because Joni Mitchell's hit song from 1970 was rolling through my mind. I don't know if anybody here is old enough to remember, they paved paradise and put up a parking lot? Yeah, been hearing that song a lot this week, but it's really apropos for what we're talking about. It, it was a protest song, and she wrote it because of a place that was beautiful that was in Hawaii, and the next line of that song says, "They put up a pink hotel and a swinging hotspot." Well, here again, we're trying to help out the hotel. It's already there, and it's not pink. And we would rather it not be a parking lot, and maybe it would be a swinging hotspot someday. But you'll take all of that away if it becomes a surface parking lot. And when we were at the library recently, at one of the many sessions that we have, be it a Cracker Barrel or a listening session, many people were using adjectives to describe Seventh and Wabash, and I noticed it because they're words you don't hear. Sacred was one. Precious, a precious pedestrian walkway, I heard from people. So I want you all to think of those words when you, when you think about this. It's not the same, everybody, as just any place. If we had a town square, this would be it. I mean, this is Seventh and Wabash. It, it isn't as though we don't have a heart and we don't feel bad that there was poor planning, or there were decisions made that have forced them to need the parking lot. But this is not going to be the solution. And I'm also reminded, in my Googling of Terre Haute history today, that Chauncey Rose chose that corner in 1838 to build the Prairie House, which is the original Terre Haute House, as many of you know. And I was thinking about Chauncey today. What would he say if he was here? Would he want you to say, "No, not today, not here, not in our town, find another way. This is precious, this is sacred, it means too much to our local citizens, and it means too much to history." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mike Gordon?
Mike Gordon, 1933, South 31st, property I own. 7916 East Turnway Drive, property I live in. And I work in downtown Terre Haute all the time. I'm old enough to remember when Rock Tucker was the mayor of Terre Haute, so that's how far back I go. I work in downtown every day. One of my concerns is, I like good places to eat. I love Georgia's restaurant. It's a great place to eat. I love many of the other places to eat, but we're down to about eight downtown now, and that's kind of sad, and it gets tiresome after a while, too. If we're talking about moving an office building, actually two office buildings, vacating two office buildings for, essentially for parking, that seems like a bad trade-off. But the most important thing here is who's going to make those decisions? I respectfully disagree with Todd. I think the city council should be in a position to make that decision. I think I want elected officials accountable for their decisions making those. The members of the redevelopment commission are appointed, some of them are appointed by elected officials, but they're appointed. The Board of Zoning Appeals is appointed. The area planning commission- The Area Planning Commission is appointed. The Capital Improvement Board, again, same mix, appointed. They're not directly accountable for their offices and their positions as you are. You are the body that should ultimately be helping decide what happens in downtown Terre Haute, whether it goes up or goes down. And I'm seeing it continue to go down, and that makes me really sad. So from my perspective, the decision on, on zoning needs to not be relegated to bureaucrats, needs to not be relegated to political appointees, needs to be done in broad daylight, in accountable meetings where people can hear your votes, they can talk to you, they can give you feedback, they can count on the fact that if you hold a meeting, that it's actually going to take place. That there's going to be an agenda for that meeting and that the public has opportunities to attend. And that it's going to be something that working people can attend and it's not going to happen at 9:00 AM in the ballots of the county office buildings. You know, so from my perspective, I encourage you, stand up, take the power that you have, speak out for your constituents, demand the answers. I think it's pathetic that this whole thing was started by comments by the redevelopment department who, not represented here, not available for public questioning. One-on-one meetings with Todd or with Mr. Elliott don't count as accountability. Meeting the public, answering public questions, interacting with the public is what we should do. That's what you do. So that's why I want you to stand up and take this decision in your own hands, take the power that you have, exercise it properly. Thank you.
Uh, sorry, I cannot read the last name. John?
Good evening, my name's John Maraldo. I live at 350 South 22nd Street. I moved here, we moved here 11 years ago. My wife grew up here. We moved here because of the low cost of living, the ease of living in Terre Haute, including the ease of driving downtown and finding a parking place. Now we've got a new convention center coming in, many more visitors, a lot more parking needed. So when we drive downtown, where am I supposed to park? Well, let me tell you. I'd much rather drive downtown and have a harder time to park than to see Seventh and Wabash turn into a parking lot. We have worked very hard beautifying, not only enlivening this city, but beautifying our downtown with the new arts corridor and all the other things that are happening. Now, this morning's paper reported that some people have approached you council members with a worry that if we don't put in a ground-level parking lot, the convention center will be moved. It's really difficult to take that worry, that supposed threat, as credible. Are we supposed to believe that the investors are going to abandon the new project? All the money been put in, that's been put into it? We supposed to believe that Superman is going to swoop down and lift up the convention center and move it somewhere else in town? Now there are alternatives that have been proposed at the library meeting to a ground-level parking lot. I'm asking you not to allow a ground-level parking lot at that intersection. Let's not turn the crossroads of America into a parking lot. Let's not turn the crossroads of America into a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Todd Thacker?
Todd Thacker, 37, Hazelwood Court. I work here, uh, work in the city limits with IVW. And the building trades, we've talked about this. I appreciate that we're having this discussion and thank you for listening. I, uh, I don't have an opinion on this yet because I don't feel like I have enough information. I wasn't able to make the listening, I appreciate that that was available. So I just came tonight to try to hear, and I'm glad that you're not taking action on it because I don't think there's enough information on dealing with that yet. That's all I have.
Thank you, Todd. Connie Rinn? Nope. Andrew Connor?
Andrew Connor, 121 Country Club Road. Please maintain the rules that prohibit surface parking at Seventh and Wabash. This ordinance would ensure the rules are preserved. These rules are the result of careful, exhaustive, and cooperative visioning that spanned years of careful planning. As a community, we spent tens of thousands of dollars and countless hours of volunteer and staff and consultants' time on workshops, brainstorming sessions, and reviews of best practices. As a community, we engage downtown stakeholders, investors, institutions, and government leaders. To reject those rules now out of fear of a second-hand threat would be the worst kind of reactionary governments. And we're stronger than that, and we should ask for more from our developers. We haven't heard directly from the hotel owner what their specific requirements are. We haven't had an explanation from the project leaders to tell us why they didn't have the plans and estimates worked out for the second garage before the groundbreaking and before they signed contracts, before they spent millions of dollars on public tax money on a plan that isn't feasible, before they pitched a public referendum, a tax increase in support of a project that we're now told maybe was never viable. Their planning was poor, and now you're being asked to enable that poor planning at the expense of a community plan that we made together. Our own citizens and leaders thoughtfully crafted these guidelines to create an atmosphere for developing the downtown that the public wants. A cornerstone of the plan is a core with dense development that fills the street wall with buildings right up to the sidewalk. As originally presented, the convention center project could have been the very best thing that has happened downtown in decades, and I support it. When the plans were unveiled, I applauded them. But surface parking at the crossroads of America would be a horrible blot on this effort, and it would undermine the whole plan to guide downtown development with rules that the community agreed on. It would hollow out the very density that distinguishes a downtown from a suburban strip mall or an office park. Planning and zoning are promises. Promises that we make to each other to protect each other's property and investments and to guide our common future. Investors are watching. They're watching to see if we keep our promises. Both large and small investors should be able to trust that we will provide a predictable, stable environment that enacts those promises, the development plans and vision that we prompted when we courted them to come downtown and invest. Otherwise, we're just playing bait and switch. If we would easily wipe away the foundational principles that we worked together to enact, if we'll compromise our vision and the ideals because of some implied threat, how could they ever trust any of the other promises that we make to them? How could they possibly believe that we will deal in good faith with them and keep our promises and use the law and zoning rules to protect them in the future? Waivers of planning and zoning rules, even when they're well-intentioned, the waivers, when the waivers are well-intentioned, in pursuit of a popular project undermine the atmosphere that developers, investors, and lenders require. It undermines the business-friendly environment that we've been promising and working to create. We deserve better planning and a greater vision than we're being told that we have to accept for what will be the biggest, most expensive project in our downtown's history with the most public dollars ever invested. Let's replace the threats with creative approaches to the obstacles. Let's try, let's trade private conversations for public collaboration. Let's trade the opacity of this process for a little transparency in respect for the community standards that we all agreed upon. This should have been a part of the comprehensive planning for this project all along. If there had been a little more listening and a little less pride from the beginning, we might have a much bigger convention center already built with plenty of room for hotels and parking garages at the crossroads of America. I'm tired of our town being so needy that we'll accept any project that comes along and be grateful. We should have some self-respect and dignity and ask for more. Investors don't respect us when we capitulate to threats or compromise the rules that they obeyed, or when we tell the public at the 11th hour that the project has changed and the promises weren't realistic, but it's too late for their input. We can expect more. We can demand a higher standard if we will stand up for what we have said that standard will be. We don't have to accept threats. We don't have to settle for conflicted, compromised, and low-vision approaches to downtown development. Please keep the rules. Strengthen the rules. Maintain our standards and keep our promises. Thank you.
Andrew. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jeff Ford. I live at, uh, 129 and a half, South 7th Street. Um, not a real good public speaker, so can I hire Shagley right now?
He's not either.
He's not either. You know, I heard, I heard that last night, sir.
Ouch, ouch.
Okay, um, again, I'm Jeff Ford. I'm here to speak, I, I guess I have three roles. I'm a downtown business owner, I, uh, I'm a member of the BZA, the gentleman who was, and then, uh, I am also a somewhat lifelong resident with a few, a few holes peppered in there a little bit. Um, as a business owner, it's my belief that the, uh, the only place for the convention center is downtown. There is no other home for the convention center. If, i- if the threats are viable or not viable, if, if that convention center goes out east, it's just going to negate all the growth, all the prospect, all the promise of what downtown has. Um, and quite honestly, it'll, if, if we waste this opportunity, I, I believe downtown's done, sorry. Uh, you know? Downtown, um, so, and then as a member of the BZA, um, and I, if it's been withdrawn, I'm, I'm sorry, this is probably repetitive, but the BZA has, has been formed to, uh, you know, uh, take on a function, I guess, where the, we're kind of the last, uh, say on some things. So to take a single issue and build a wall around something, I, I, I think procedurally is wrong. I feel that you have to let the processes that are in place work through the system. That's why we're here. Uh, you know, to, to address a little bit, we don't do things behind closed doors. We do do public meetings. You're allowed to speak to them. No, we're not elected officials, but unfortunately, we're all business owners in this community and most of the people who live around here speak quite loud with their pocketbooks. Um, and, and all of us who volunteer and/or are elected in the community, uh, have to weigh that every day to, to, because I gotta make a living. And if you don't like what I say, you know, I need to sell steaks, too. So, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to make people mad, but it, it's just an opinion. Um, so, you, you know, you, you've got to let the, the processes play out. So, so leave, leave the BZA to the BZA. You guys take care of what you guys need to take care of, and, and it'll all work out fine. As a lifelong resident, it, uh, unfortunately, it seems to me that this discussion's about legacy. Um, the, the ability to give your grandchildren and children a historically significant bus lane downtown, unfortunately, it died about 60 years ago. Again, I hate that. I have one of the few old buildings left in Terre Haute, and we've sunk a lot of money into keeping this thing standing, but the facts are the facts. You know, the Meese Building's gone, Schultz Building gone, everything's been torn down. Um, we're 60 years too late in trying to save the facades of Terre Haute. Um, also, uh, the legacy of good-paying jobs in our community left 40 years ago. The reason my family moved to Terre Haute was for manufacturing, and it's just not around anymore. I, I, I grew up very fortunate, but I grew up because of manufact- fortunate because of manufacturing. It just does not exist here in this town anymore. Um, of those two facts, one of them's fixable. We can still bring jobs to this community, and it seems like we have a good opportunity right now to bring some jobs, bring some tourism, and we kind of need to take advantage of that. Um, it's always been my belief that, that I want this town to be fully employed. I, as a small business owner, I want a town that is vibrant, that is full of, uh, well-educated people making good livings, because I feel like I have a product that, that they'll buy. But without jobs, I've got no, I mean, my product's worth nothing. So I, I think we're at that point right now where we don't want to pass that opportunity up. Um, to further that a little bit more, um, I hate to think that discussions and stances in our community are made for personal reasons. I understand we're a small community, we all know too much about each other. Uh, but unfortunately, that creeps into decision-making. Um, you know, to, to, to bring up, uh, one of the, the past arguments that was brought up here, the YMCA, you know, we're willing, there, there's a significant portion of us in our community that are willing to work hard to, uh, hand over the YMCA. I believe the gentlemen's might be here to like that, but, um, you, you know, but that's a project that, that's funded by, it's a government-funded project, the, the whole thing's government-funded. We have an out-of-state company that wants to do all this kind of stuff, and, and there's an argument about whether we want to do that or not, and I, and I think that argument probably is going to win out in the long run. Um, however, we've got a local family who's willing to invest local money in the community, and we want to fight these guys. It doesn't make much sense to me why we always want to fight these guys. Um, this particular project has a lot of long-term, uh, benefits that are very substantial. Huge job creations out of these things. Uh, when you add the casino into it, there's easily 400 kitchen jobs that, that are going to be created. Um, and personally, as, as somebody who's trying to hire people, I know that our community doesn't have 400 people that are talented and not working kitchens. Which, we, instead of arguing about the, these crazy points, we need to get together and let's educate some people, let's, let's get a better workforce, let's be ready for this, because we need this stuff. We need these jobs. We need people in Terre Haute. It's okay to live off 15, 20, $25 an hour. Not everybody's a rocket scientist, and, and we need this. We, we need to make these things kind of happen. Um, so with that, I, I, I guess, you know, my point is, is we just need to embrace the opportunities, opportunities of our time. Um, let's start working together, you know, leave some of this stuff out. Let's build a legacy of growth and security so that we have something to hand down to future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That's the end of the list. Is there anyone else that's not on this list that would like to speak before we close public discussion? Seeing, uh, public discussion is now closed. Counsel, do you have any comments prior to, uh, Mr. Nation making his motion? Counselperson?
Thank you.
Cross him.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I have spoken to many, many people in the last few weeks about, about this issue, um, since, um, some before Counselperson Nation filed this ordinance in, but most of them after. Um, and I have not talked to a single person, and some of them sought me out, and I sought some of them out, I've not talked to a single person who, um, does not want the convention center, and I've not talked to a single person who does not want the convention center downtown. Um, and having it downtown is good for Terre Haute, it's good for downtown, and really, it's the best place for the convention center. Nobody wants to go to a convention center at an interstate interchange. They want to go to a convention center in a community that they can enjoy while they're at their mea- in, in the hours, that they're not actually in meetings and not at formal gatherings. So downtown is the place for it. Um, and I supported that in the past, I continue to support that. Um, so that's not the issue that's in front of us, and that's, um, I realize what does or doesn't happen here tonight might influence that decision. happen here tonight might influence that decision, but that's not the issue that's really in front of this group, and I'm very concerned that we not get that confused. I spoke this week myself with three different members of the CIB, with a few members of from Garmong, a few people from Garmong who are building, doing the building plans for this convention center, and several others who have a direct relationship to the project. And I know many of my colleagues on council did similar kinds of inquiry. I spoke with people about the possibility of a temporary surface use there, and I think that that is something that's worth considering. It's not a decision that this council can make, though, it's a decision that the CIB and the businesses involved in that have to make. We can only act on the things we can act on, and in this case, we already have fairly strong ordinances, as Mr. Connor alluded to, that were passed some years ago to protect downtown development and to put into effect some standards for building practices. Now, many of us go to other communities, we visit other communities, and I don't know, I mean, I'm sure all of you have a conversation every week about some other communities downtown that you think is really great, and we could probably all name the same three Indiana communities if we start talking about it right here tonight. One of the reasons we like going to those communities and we like going to their downtowns is that they have standards for the development of their downtown and for other areas in their town as well. So I take very seriously the things that were pointed out by Mr. Connor. I think those are not things that we should just turn our heads away from. I think it's important that if we, as a community, have established those, that we continue to honor them and to appreciate what they can do for our community, because it is part of good development in communities, and there's no reason that our community can't be one of those. I also understand that legitimate things happen in the course of any large project that cause you to have to make changes. And I, you know, I appreciated all the members of the CIB and of the folks from Garmong that I talked to about this, who helped me understand, I think, some of the things that have happened in this project that have created the issue that brought it to council tonight. What I am concerned about is that I haven't gotten any strong sense that there's any real creative thinking going on about solving that. I did have some conversations with some of those people where we talked about a possible limited time use, a little longer than Mr. Nation suggested earlier, I think you said, Todd, something like one to three years or something like that, and maybe five years or something like that, that it could be used as a surface lot and then redevelopment, owning that and the city and others perhaps coming to a more creative and appropriate use of that property. I think that's worth the CIB and the developers and all the parties involved really considering, and I'd like to see that happen. I think almost everyone here would like to see something like that happen. Compromise, government often involves compromise, and big projects like this often involve compromise. So we may not all get 100% of what we'd like to see happen there right away, but I think that a win-win situation can still come up there. So I would like to see that happen. I don't think, as a council member, I have much power in that situation except to insist that our current requirements for development in that area of town be honored. And so that's my plea. And also, I am very much interested in being part of any creative discussion on solving that problem if I can be of some assistance. And I think almost any of us, I'm guessing almost any of us here sitting here tonight would be willing to be part of that. But I do think we have those standards for a reason, and I hope that everyone will take those seriously. I still cannot believe that the only option is to move it somewhere else. I just don't, you know, I just don't think that that can be the only option. We have more creativity in this community than that. Thank you, Ayew.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I agree with everything Martha said, I will not repeat any of it. What I don't want us to lose is this dialogue that we began to have with the community. I applaud Todd, I was appointed to Area Planning Commission and heard him as he presented the ordinance to area planning in the beginning, and the first thing that he shared with us was his intent was to provoke conversation, and I think we've done a really good job of that, from as he addressed area planning to the listening session at the library last week. I've got tons of emails. Having not been a part of this process throughout the whole process, I've done a great amount of research and reading this week, and I just don't have all the, if we would have had to vote on this tonight, had Todd not withdrawn this, tonight, I don't think I'd have all the information I needed to vote one way or another with any kind of confidence. So to cut to the chase, what I'd like to see is this conversation not end. I think it's important that we change the way we talk about these things in our community. And so I'm going to propose, and I don't know what the proper way is to do that, is, you know, we had a great ad hoc committee that we put together to talk about chickens in our community. I think that this topic is equally as important as those chickens and whether your neighbors have them or not. So, I don't know what the process is for that, but I would like to see the CIB board, representatives from the city council, hotel developer, maybe someone from the building trades, construction manager, county council, school corporation, and a member of the community sit down at the table and continue to have this conversation and provide that transparency back to the public. There's things to learn throughout this process. There's state statute that the area planning has to abide by, there's codes and rules and issues that come up in construction that we don't know about if we don't talk about them. So I don't know what that process is, what it looks like, or how to even begin to attempt it, but, you know, that's my feedback on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? George?
I think Tammy's actually struck a good idea there, and if I'm not mistaken, it's within your powers, the council president, to appoint an ad hoc committee. Can you do that right now?
If we can. Can at this point? I don't think so.
It depends on how.
The council rules allows the president to form an ad hoc committee and appoint members to the committee. So with this being the subject matter, the real question's going to be is what the specific purpose of the ad hoc committee's going to be.
Okay, can I, would you be opposed to me trying to get some little information and making that appointment next Thursday?
That's fine.
Is that okay with you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I will do that. I think it's a great idea, but I don't want to just, without any, without thinking about it.
I agree.
Okay? All right. And then please reach out to me to let me know your interests, whoever's interested.
I'll be on it.
I'm sure of that. Before we entertain your motion to withdraw, I would like to compliment Councilman, Counselperson Nation for at least starting the conversation. He had mentioned this as a listening session basically, and I think you have succeeded in that. And not only because these folks listened and we listened, but because we hope that the CIB and those directly involved with the project have also listened. So I have spoke to some of them, and I believe that in the next few years, hopefully, once this project gets off the ground, that bigger and better things will be at that location. I have high hopes for that. So hopefully, that's what happens. In the meantime, do you have a comment, Councilman Allen?
I didn't.
Okay, go for it.
Okay.
Ayew.
Thank you. Eddie, just so we all understand, could you explain to us exactly what changes this amendment makes before we table it?
The general ordinance one is as proposed in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. It removes the ability from that entire, to have anything in that entire subsection be taken to the Board of Zoning Appeals for variance, specifically applies in this situation for having a surface parking lot as a primary use in this particular district.
Okay. And it covers what properties, what territory?
The actual subsection that's addressed is much broader than just surface parking, it's the whole C9 core pedestrian area, which is, I can't tell you the exact streets, but primary, the vast majority of downtown.
Third and Ninth, Cherry to Poplar, One, One, Seven. Sorry.
Ayew.
Okay, any other comments? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Oh, I move to withdraw General Ordinance Number One, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Nation, second by Counselperson Cross, as were you and Crossan, to withdraw General Ordinance One, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Thank you all for attending, we'll get on with our other business. If you would like to stay with us, you're more than welcome to. It's not going to last much longer. I'll give you a couple minutes to, let's take a five-minute break, okay? Okay. All righty, your next item on the agenda, let's see, attachment confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Items on first reading?
Appropriation Two, 2020, $1,500,000 from Edit Number 04040096 to Lafayette Avenue Corridor Project Number 450527, you have correspondence in front of you.
Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Yes, sir. Chuck Anis, City Engineer. What you have there in front of you is a cost breakdown for Lafayette Avenue project. The $1.5 million appropriation that we're asking for tonight was what was budgeted in last year's budget but not spent. We did not have a contract at that time, so we could not encumber the money, that would have been our preference. And as a matter of fact, yesterday, the bids came in, you'll see there it's noted, the apparent low bidder, they're at $7.99 million. That bid, like I said, the bid date was yesterday. Currently, right now, currently, the Indiana Department of Transportation is reviewing the bids, making sure that it's, their bids are in order, there was only one bidder. But with this appropriation and the money we have budgeted this year, and since the duration of the project will extend beyond this year, we'll need to budget some money for next year, and you can see that here down at the bottom there, we'll need some money in the 2021 budget to make this project work. It's, the $8 million there is a little more than what we started with as a cost estimate. Just, you can see there, it's highlighted there, an additional $1.5 million federal money was secured by West Central for our use, I think it came from Anderson. So the project basically is $6.3 million federal money, the rest being local funds. Anyway, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the public? Strile? Behind you, Chuck.
Yes, just.
State your name and address again, please.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde, 1411 Papa Street, Carroll, Indiana.
Thank you.
I would like to ask the gentleman to describe exactly what we're spending $6 million of taxpayer money from the state for and what we're going to add at least $2,000,000 if not $3 million of local tax money for. And again, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'd just like to know what it is we're getting for this money. Thank you.
Mr. Anis?
This project, Lafayette Avenue, essentially from Fort Harrison North to Haythorn, the county's done their section from Haythorn North. The largest single part of this is the storm sewer, there is no storm sewer in that neighborhood. So storm sewer will be installed, the street will be completely rebuilt, curb and gutter widened, and sidewalk on the west, if you want to call that the west side. So it's basically a reconstruction of the whole, of the whole section from, like I said, Fort Harrison North.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Okay, we'll close that. Counsel? Counsel mail?
Chuck, when we put the budget together last fall, we put $1.8 million in the budget for this item.
Yes.
In the added budget.
Yes.
Now, not even six months later, we're, we're asked to add $1,500,000 to that to get to 3.3.
Yes.
So what happened? Why are we having to go from $1.8 to 3.3?
Because we, we need that money budgeted in separate years, so we couldn't take it all out of one year's budget.
But then we should have put 3.3 in last fall for this year if we weren't going to spend it last year. I don't understand why we didn't budget 3.3 million.
The bid date was bumped into this year, so we couldn't have done it. We would have had to, we would have had to done it last fall, but the bid was bumped into this year.
I'm sorry. Run that by me again.
The bid date kind of extended past the year, it was, I think the bid date was, last year was in November, but the bid was bumped here to March. But yeah, we had to, we had, we didn't have the funds to do the full $3 million last, you know, this, in this year's budget.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody told us that, that our share of this was going to be $3.3 million.
No. I don't know. I, that's kind of.
I mean, I would think if we, if it was in the budget for last year, but we didn't spend it, and we knew we were going to need $3.3 million, we put $3.3 million in our budget. I mean, that's pretty common, common sense to me.
I guess our plan.
Or did we originally think $1.8 was all we're going to need, now something changed?
No, nothing, nothing changed. I mean, the, we would have preferred to have encumbered that money from last year, but we didn't have, we don't have a contract, we don't have, we didn't, it wasn't bid yet. That was the original plan, was to encumber the money from year to year. But the bid date was bumped to March, we had to basically take the money from two different budgets, two different budget years.
Okay. I'm still a bit confused, somewhat less, though. Thank you. Ayew.
Counselperson Crossan. But at the point, and I suppose part of this is just for future projects too, but at the point that you knew you weren't going to be able to get the bids and stuff done that year, was that before we did the budget process last year?
No, it was after.
When did you become aware that that wasn't going to be able to?
Well, the original bid date was November, and I think we found out pretty late last year that it was going to be pushed to March, so I'm not actually sure when we knew it.
Okay. Ayew.
Any other questions? Ask for someone.
Yeah, Chuck, real quickly, can you, assuming this all goes through, can you tell us the start date and estimated completion date?
It'll start probably 60 days from now, depending on, like I said, INDOT is reviewing the bids right now, there, we expect a, excuse me, an award. There, we expect a, excuse me, an award from INDOT in either late March, early May, or early April, and then probably 60 days after that when they actually break ground. So you're probably talking two or three months.
For start?
Yeah.
And how long do you think it'll take to complete?
I think this schedule was a year and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll double check on that.
Councilperson Aller?
I've got, I know we're talking about the downtown and making sure that the town, that downtown survives. We're worried about 46 growing. The north end has seen a lot of hits. And roughly from spring clean to even up where Lafayette comes into 25th Street at that intersection, you're talking like over 30 businesses that are in there. Landlocked businesses. The only in and out they have is on Lafayette Avenue. And while it's great that I saw in my district Margaret Avenue be done, First Street be done, years back, Holman, the completion of Holman, it hurt businesses. I am in a rough spot here because I work in that area. I've talked to a lot of the business owners. I've talked to Chuck about it. I want to make sure, you're talking a year and a half. And even if we take out, you know, franchises that have more backing, you've got a lot of hometown businesses along there that I don't want to see be out of business in a year and a half. They can't support it. We've already seen Plaza North, they've lost Alorica, they lost Radio Shack, there's empty spots sitting all over Plaza North area. We can't let the north side die. So if this project goes forward, I ask that you be considerate, and you take those businesses in consideration. Get out there, talk to them. That's all they're asking. They're asking for information. They want to know, you know, when's it going to start? When's it going to end? What's it going to take in? How much of our properties are we losing? They're, they're not getting the answers they need. I think it would be nice if, you know, we have some drawings, if we could, even with, I know some of those, we held a town hall meeting, and invite those business owners and let them know what's going to happen to their properties. I mean, I'm sitting up there, and I've got business owners coming up to me left and right, and not even my district. And I'm getting slammed with them. I know for reference, one of them, there's, there's probably 10 girls that work in a, in a salon up there. They're single moms. I mean, they're not going to make any money if, if it's, if the road's shut down, or there's a gravel road where people don't want to travel up and down that road. It's just simple hours, the simple things that they need. And I just don't want to see the north end. The north end's already been hurt, and I don't want to see the north end die. I think it needs to start thriving just as much as the downtown, the 46, the south end. You know, we need to take everything into consideration. I yield for now.
Councilperson Elliott?
Yeah. As you know, Chuck, we just got this schedule late today, because I didn't have a lot of time to, to look at it. What's this 2021 deal down at the bottom?
Yeah, we're still going to need money out of 20, the 21 budget to finish up the project.
So the 3.3 isn't enough?
It's, uh, we're, right now, we're looking for a match money. The match money, $2.5 million plus the funds on hand, the 3.3.
Then I see a surplus line there at X of 880, and then I see that spent in 2020, and then we're, then we're going to need, we're going to have more money in the budget for this project for '21?
Yes, that's the point. That's the plan right now, but we can see there, we've got contingencies for change orders and the like that may not be, may not be required. We'll certainly know better when we put our budgets together where we're going to be in '21.
Okay, so I see a total of eight. I see a total of $1,606 in contingency in this?
Yes.
Three different lines?
Yes.
Hmm?
Yes.
And like $1,400,000 for inspection?
Yes.
What's inspection entail?
Uh, paying someone to stand out and watch the work, make sure that's being done correctly. We do that on all of our public works jobs.
Apparently, there's a law that requires that?
It's, it's common, I don't know, INDOT does it on all their projects, Sanitary District does it on all of our projects.
But $1,400,000?
Well, it's the going rate's 15%. Total cost of $10 million, $1.5 million would be 15%.
Okay. I yield.
Any other question or comments from the council?
Hey, um...
Mr. President? Councilperson Nation?
Chuck, could you talk just a little bit about how you try to drive down the inspection costs by doing some of it in-house?
Yeah, on, on projects that we can, INDOT will not let us do the inspection in-house. But on projects where we can, yes, this is, this is essentially an INDOT project. Even though it's inside city, we're putting up quite a bit of the funding for it, it's an INDOT project. We have a team of inspectors in our office doing inspection work for any projects that we can. We kind of pay ourselves in those situations. We do inspections, like I said, for the Sanitary District, we do inspections for redevelopment and anything else that we can do inspections for. Unfortunately, a lot of the sanitary, the big long-term control plan projects, the SRF folks will not allow us to do our own inspection work on those sewer projects. Same way with INDOT, they won't let us do those. But the other projects we can, we do those in-house.
Thanks for that. The other thing, can you talk about what is planned for this project to address some of the concerns that Amy expressed?
Right.
Did you, will you be having a public session for business owners?
We have had in the past. We could do another one. I think we've had two in the past up on the north side. We could, we, we could do another one, that's, that would not be a problem. The project is going to be done, as we refer to it, under traffic, so traffic will be running up and down a lot the whole time. The contractor's working on half of it. So the road will not be closed in any extended period of time. Now, if we have to put a storm sewer across the road, we'll do it, excuse me, we'll do it a half at a time. We'll do one side of the road, they'll be driving on the white rock patch, and then we'll switch to the other side of the road. Same thing with drive approaches. If we've got a 30-foot drive approach to a business, we'll put a control joint in the middle, we'll pour half of the approach on one side while that side is open, and then we'll switch sides, replace that approach while this side is open. So we've, we've done this before. Yes, I'm not going to tell you it's not dusty and dirty and inconvenient, but we've done this before, and we do everything we can to keep the businesses accessible and open.
Thanks for that, too. As someone who grew up in the Collat Park area in the north end, and whose parents still live there, and who flies the route of Lafayette Avenue all the time, I am delighted to see the city finally moving forward with this project. We talk about the need in that area. Well, we're getting ready to spend over $10 million to address that need. It's hard while this stuff is happening, but at the end, it's going to be better for the businesses up there, period. I firmly believe that, and I applaud you guys for continuing to work on this in the face of all of the problems that you've come up against. I know that they've been significant over the years. And with that, if there's no further discussion, I move for approval of Appropriation Number Two.
Take action.
Oh, I think, I move that we vote to vote on Appropriation Number Two, 2020, tonight.
Been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson DeBon, that we vote to take action on Appropriation Two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please to take action.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Appropriation Number Two, 2020.
Been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson DeBon, that we approve Appropriation Two, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next item.
Appropriation Three, 2020, $10,075 from Edit Number 04040096 to Demoben State Buildings Number 432018.
Anyone here to speak on this?
I'm Dean Branson with the Department of Redevelopment. Hopefully, I've got the only non-controversial spot on the program tonight. For the benefit of our two members that are new to me, I'd like to give a real brief estimation of what we're doing here. Our department contracts and administers' contracts are tearing down substandard structures in the city. When we do that, we charge the owners for the cost of doing that, and those that are paid for out of edit funds, whenever we collect the cost from an owner, we come in here and ask for a transfer so that that money's put back into our edit budget and we can do more demolition with it. It, it's a recurring thing, and hopefully, we'll be back in several more times this year.
But any questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Counsel? Councilperson Nation?
I move that we vote to take action on Appropriation Number Three, tonight.
Second.
Been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Cross, that we take action on Appropriation Three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action. Councilperson Nation?
I vote that we, I, I move for approval of Appropriation Number Three, 2020.
Second.
Been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we approve appropria, I'm sorry, Garrison. I have a hearing problem. Thank you. That we approve Appropriation Three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Next item.
General Ordinance Two, 2020, amending city code, Chapter Eight, Article, I'm sorry, Chapter Eight, Section Eight-Dash-11, creating a multi-way stop intersection at Ferndale Drive and Terravista Drive.
Anyone here to speak on this? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Ward. I'm a Terravista neighbor, resident. I'm at 312 Terravista Drive.
And my name is Brent Hall. I am Chris's neighbor at 58 Ferndale Drive.
First of all, I want to thank Councilman Elliott for helping me since August to get this on the agenda tonight. If any of you are familiar with this intersection in question, there's a new development on the south side of that intersection called Terravista Go Inn, and it's adding in, I want to say over maybe 50 plots. In fact, the first home is currently going up as we speak. This used to be an intersection that was a 90-degree angle with traffic going both in a southerly direction toward the west as well, the 90-degree bend, and traffic just naturally had to almost come to a complete stop. But now, of course, with the extension of Ferndale Drive to the south, it's kind of a straight shot back there. And so what we're asking for is a control to be placed on the southbound facing Ferndale Drive portion. There are already stop signs in place on the east-facing portion, as well as the private developer put one on the northbound of Ferndale Drive. We don't have sidewalks in Terravista subdivision. This is a very heavily trafficked intersection. It actually joins two other neighborhoods, so we see a lot of kids, we see a lot of people walking their dogs, riding bikes, we have golf carts. And we have actually, my eight and 10-year-old, Brent has a six-year-old, and we have another neighbor on that intersection as well. Lots of ballplayers, lots of balls in the street. So we'd be free to take any questions. I also have before me, if anyone wants a copy of the petition, achange.org, from my neighborhood Facebook page that was signed.
Do you have enough for everybody or just...
I got enough for everyone, if you...
While he's doing that, are there any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Hyde?
Yes, Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street. I know like a lot of the people spoke earlier, I was born, raised, and lived here all my life. And even I don't know where this place is. Could the gentleman give us more description of exactly where you are and some more familiar roads that we've not recognized and named yet? Thank you. And by the way, I have no objections to them asking for the stop sign, safety is number one.
Can you just briefly describe where... Any other questions from the public? Okay, that'll be closed. Any questions from the council? No, the Chair will accept the motion.
I've been through that intersection, you know, a number of times, and can understand the concern they've had, and now with the change in traffic pattern with construction traffic and then other traffic after that, the lack of sidewalks, I mean, it's just, it's just a significant safety issue.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is this something that you approached the administration about, have taken care of administratively, and was that not successful or was...
I originally contacted the engineering office, and I believe it was Mr. Anis even that directed me to Councilman Elliott to...
Okay, okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'd, I'd just like to applaud you for your community being concerned with the safety prior to something happening out there. I actually walk in that neighborhood a lot, and I know exactly what you're talking about. It's a good call on the part.
Any other questions or comments? No? Councilperson Garrison?
Yeah, President Azar, I move to take action on General Ordinance Two, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison, seconded by Councilperson Bowden, that we take action on General Ordinance Two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did I get the wrong person again?
No big deal. We're good.
Mr. President, I move approval of General Ordinance Two, 2020, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison, seconded by Councilperson Bowden, that we approve General Ordinance Two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
I know how easy it is to have that happen.
Unless I'm, unless I'm looking.
I run that corner, that's a good, that's a good thing, because that's going to, I'm going to get more safe.
Next item.
Special Ordinance Two, 2020, resuming a property located at 4207 East Margaret Avenue. Airway planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Is there a really good speaker here to speak on this?
You know, I wish everybody was still here to see this. Hopefully, they tune in on the TV and watch it.
There you go.
Can we limit him to two minutes?
Thank you. Mr. President, fellow members of the council, my name is Richard Shagley. I'm Attorney at Right Shagley Lowery. And tonight, I'm here representing petitioners Johnny and Melba Edwards, I followed that. You may remember the Edwards, this is the third time they've been here. The first time, they came to kind of listen to the rezoning of what's now the John Deere dealership at Margaret and, and Fruit Ridge. The second time they were here was, I believe, the second quarter of 19, to rezone three lots that are about an eighth to a quarter mile down from this on Margaret. As you may recall, when I spoke that evening, the Edwards believe they lost out on a deal to sell their property because it wasn't ready to go. As you may have heard, there's a casino going out on 46. And they believe, I think as, as well as most people in our community, that that area is going to... as well as most people in our community, that that area is going to expand rapidly. I think once that's approved, that is going to go fast. As you know, the city, in preparation for development on 46, their plan is for Margaret to be commercial all the way down that stretch, and ultimately, realistically, commercial from 46 to Third Street. That's going to be a corridor to help the traffic flow, and it's going to be a commercial corridor at that, especially from Fruit Ridge to 46. So, the Edwards acquired another piece of property that's a little further east of their current piece, and in preparation of what is going on, they would like to rezone it from residential to C3, which is what the other piece is on. They believe that will put them in a position to compete with others in that area as a go project. As you probably have in your packets, the Area Plan Commission, their staff gave it a favorable recommendation with three conditions that are more than fair and realistic and really basic requirements in development. And back to the project from last year, one of those requirements, as you may recall, was a hard surface for the churches there. They completed that, I believe, as in the third quarter of nineteen. So what you have in front of you is a petitioner who is responsible and willing to do what is required and necessary of them by, not on this board, but from other individuals or other groups as well. So, area plan, the staff gave a favorable report to the full board. Last night, the Area Plan Commission, after a pretty good discussion, gave it a favorable recommendation. There was one individual who spoke against it, self-reclaimed good speaker. So, and Dr. Biggs will tell you a few things. One, he attempted to buy his property and was unable to. Two, that there's no water service to this property, and he's correct, there is no water main down Margaret at this time, but as you probably have heard, any American water is going to run a line from just, just west of Fruit Ridge in Margaret, right in front of those apartments I rezoned last year, all the way down to 46. Because they, like everybody else, sees what's going on, they're going to need water, they want to be there, so they have to hook up, and this is going commercial. So, not really an issue. There is no sewer there right now, but I believe that will follow. And then, there's also was mentioned a possible full oil tank. These items were brought up last night, but last night, those aren't really issues that are pertinent or relevant to the Area Plan Commission, nor are they really relevant to you this evening, but I thought you should be aware of what comments were made. What you have in front of you is a petitioner who has been before you before, like I said, I believe it was the second quarter of nineteen, wanting to rezone property that our community has kind of determined is going to be commercial. He would like it to be commercial now, so when the time is right, he is... he will be ready to go. And like I mentioned, he felt like he missed out on opportunity because he wasn't ready to go, and he does not want to be in that position again. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Would you like to speak, sir? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Dr. Joseph Biggs. I reside at 4283 East Margaret Drive, and in full disclosure and transparency, our property is adjacent just to the east and south of the 4207 property before you tonight. So, Mr. President, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I do have a prepared statement with your permission. My statement may also go a couple of minutes over my allotted three-minute time. Permission of the council to do so?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. My wife Lynn and I have resided in Terre Haute for the past twenty-nine years in this location, 4283 East Margaret Drive. Lynn is a native of Terre Haute. For the past thirty-two years, I've served the Terre Haute community as a psychologist, a faculty member with Indiana State University, and Union Hospital's medical education programs, and most recently, as a former executive director of the Richard G. Lieber Center for World Health at Union Hospital. I also, for eight years, served as the chairperson of the Indiana State Psychology Board, which is a licensing and regulatory board for psychologists in the state of Indiana. So, I understand long meetings, and I appreciate your patience tonight with everything that's been going on. I stand before you this evening to respectfully request that you either table or do not pass the special ordinance proposal presently before you. I'll present my reasons for this request shortly. I also stand here to clarify some comments that I made at the Area Plan Commission meeting last night, which were incorrectly reported in the paper. I have also some corrections of what Mr. Shagley just said. While I appreciate the excellent reporting of yesterday's meeting by Mr. Modestet and attributing star, there's a statement that I believe was incorrect, and that statement was that I said that the rezoning is unfitting for this area. That's not entirely accurate in reflecting my concerns. My statement last night was that this property, 4207 East Margaret Drive, is ill-suited... the term I used was ill-suited, for commercial development for numerous reasons. As I explained last night, my wife and I explored this property as a second home, following the death of its longtime owner, Dr. Marion T. Jackson, who was a very close family friend. We had first right of refusal, and we very much could have purchased the property, but we chose not to for the various reasons. As Mr. Shagley alluded to, we had the home inspected by Mr. Rick Lewis of Lewis Home Inspection LLC. Through this inspection, we learned that the property currently does not have access to city water, nor do any of the homes in that area. Most importantly, we learned that the home was never connected to city sewer, which I believe is a violation of City Code. There's also a contaminated water supply due to an inadequate septic system, EKOLI was in the water, and there's a large... there is no possibility, there is a reality, I've touched it, there's a large underground storage tank with heating oil located in it, approximately fifty yards from Margaret Avenue. Although the entirety of this underground storage tank could not be determined by Mr. Lewis at the time during his inspection, its age would make anyone concerned that there is likely seepage of heating oil into the groundwater or ground soil, which will require environmental remediation. I say all these things just because, again, I realize that specific to this home, they were alarming enough to dissuade us from purchasing the home, but they point to a larger issue. This larger issue is that this property is ill-suited for commercial development. The larger problem is as well as that none of the properties in this stretch of East Margaret Drive are properly suited for redevelopment, for commercial development at this time. Mr. Shagley mentioned the absence of city water. It remains problematic for all the properties in this stretch from Fruit Ridge to 46, especially for homeowners such as myself, who are very concerned that the draw on our wells will be problematic should commercial development occur in this area. On numerous occasions, we've been promised that Indiana American Water Company will soon bring city water to this area. However, no specific delivery date has ever been provided regarding these promissory comments. Furthermore, residents' concerns about the structural integrity of East Margaret Drive, and the road surface, and storm drainage from the west of this property to Fruit Ridge Avenue have also never been addressed. It's interesting, while the improvements from east of my property to 46 have occurred, widening of the road, storm drainage has occurred, none, none of the properties that have been commercially rezoned are fronted by this new part of Margaret Drive. They are fronted by the old Margaret Drive, which has inadequate road integrity and storm sewage drainage. Again, for homeowners residing in this area, the poor structural integrity of the road, the poor storm drainage is a concern that will continue to grow with increased commercial traffic. Put simply and straightforwardly, there is a significant lack of infrastructure necessary for commercial development in this area. The property in question before you is a perfect example of this deficiency. Now, while I can understand the enthusiasm associated with the possibility of a casino to be located within about a mile of this property, I'm concerned about the increasing frequency of speculative land-grabbing activity that is occurring in this area in anticipation of this possible event. And I say possible because all of us have seen that the casino decision has been delayed due to some concerns by the Indiana Gaming Commission of inappropriate and possible legal behavior. Purchasing land and rezoning it from R1 to C3 status in anticipation of making a profit related to some possible economic development does nothing to address the infrastructure concerns that I've just mentioned. Indeed, increased commercial development in the absence of necessary infrastructure changes puts an undue hardship on the homeowners such as ourselves, who have chosen to remain in this area. What is needed, in my opinion, is a presence and implementation of a consistent, cohesive, and coherent regional plan regarding this area and the commercial development along this stretch of East Margaret Drive. Haphazard and opportunistic speculative land-grabbing that has occurred over the past two years in this area does nothing to represent a consistent, cohesive, or coherent regional plan. I realize that Mr. Shagley, this city council in particular, and the city of Terre Haute in general, struggle mightily every day to improve Terre Haute's vitality, value, and status as a municipality. I very much admire the work that you all do to help Terre Haute reach this goal. I also realize that eventual commercial development on the east side of Terre Haute is important and essential to achieving this goal. However, in my opinion, directionalist speculative land-grabbing is not an effective way to achieve this goal. As you are aware, other cities across the nation have struggled with speculative commercial rezoning during their growth, and have decided to take a stand against it for various reasons. So therefore, this evening, I'm asking you to consider doing something a little different. I'm asking you to pause and take a step back, as other cities and leadership have done, and approach the commercial development along this section of East Margaret Drive in a proactive, consistent, coherent, and cohesive way. Please consider tabling or not passing this special ordinance request tonight to give some time for this area to be truly ready for commercial development. Please consider how this decision tonight may or may not fit into a comprehensive regional plan that you might have for this area. Please consider the creation of a use-it-or-lose-it ordinance, that if one doesn't use the property within a certain amount of time, then they lose it, so it doesn't sit unused. And finally, please consider the use of more data-driven decision-making processes when you're thinking about rezoning R1 to C3. Such thoughtful consideration is important, not only for those of us who will continue to live on this stretch of East Margaret Drive, but also for the integrity and vitality of the city of Terre Haute. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Comments from the public? Mr. Hyde?
God, I hate being put in this position. Those are compromises that neither party has mentioned, and a compromise you guys better sit up and listen to, because it's the only thing that you're going to be able to do that saves what you want to do. First of all, the city council has the ability to pass all kinds of city regulations, including zoning. You have the ability to create zoning in different areas in different ways, while you also have the ability to change the zoning. I'll give you that, and that's what you should do here. However, and this is the however part, you need to listen to. I live on Papa Street. My house sits there, and I've lived in that house going on twenty-plus years. I lived across the street in another house for fifteen years, so between the two of them, I've lived on Papa Street, and where I lived on Papa Street for forty-five years. And that street is zoned commercial or residential. You can have either or from the get-go. Now, why you can't do this, take a simple solution, and rezone all of Margaret Avenue from Third Street to 46 as residential and commercial, I do not know. It would ease... it would solve a lot of problems. But here's why. The young man... the guy's right. They want to buy and speculate land, the casino's coming, this is coming, this is that, and we're going to make money. That's not what this is about. It's about living and about businesses being able to operate effectively. If you want that done east from Twenty-Fifth Street all the way to Forty-Sixth Street, guess what? You need public city water there. Get the city to first build the water line. Get the city to build the sewer line before you have a commercial or housing. In other words, be proactive in your part. Give them the opportunity to build businesses there by giving them the commercial right, but the same token, be fair to the people living there. Don't grandfather it in either, just make it clear, just like at my house. You can live there, or you can run a business there, or you can do both. That's the way... that should end it. And encourage the water company, the sewer company, everybody else, if you want to make money and get the businesses to show up there, put some money up front instead of us paying for it all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, hearing that?
If I may, Mr. President. So, Dr. Biggs brought up a plan, and there is a plan. It's upstairs. It's in the engineering department. There's a binder, and it's got this whole area laid out, and Margaret is going to be improved. It's going to be commercial, and the petitioners want to be ready for it when it happens. The take-a-stand comment is difficult because this board, six months ago, did the exact same thing a quarter mile down the road for this exact same petitioner, for the exact same purpose. So I think that ship has sailed. Plus, I don't think this is a point where you take a stand because of my first comment about the plan. Dr. Biggs brought up the hardships. You know, there's hardships in all development. This one has a couple that are easily solved. The water, as stated, I was talking with Representative American Water on Monday night, again reaffirming that water is going down this way. They want it because they want the commercial tight, and because they know the commercials need it, and that's the reality. The concern of a well draining their area or the areas around them, in theory, the petitioners right now could build a ten-bedroom, ten-bathroom home and use a well to service it, and that will use more water than ninety percent of commercial properties would. As you may recall, Westside Tractor that built the John Deere dealership is using a well because of the lack of the minimal amount of water they use. And, you know, I can't stand here today and say what commercial use it's going to be, but as I just stated, most commercial uses, a high majority don't use very much water, so that takes away that issue. But ultimately, what we have here is a... But ultimately, what we have here is a, you have a petitioner who believes, as well as I do, as I said last night, maybe my glass is too half-full all the time, but you can feel in that area, casino or no casino, that area is going to continue to develop, and it's going to work its way down Margaret Avenue. The petitioner is here tonight to try to be ready for that development, and he'd asked that his property be rezoned from residential to commercial C3. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Shagley. Any other comments from the public? Yes, go ahead.
I mentioned that other cities across the nation have struggled with speculative commercial rezoning. If I may, I'll read a quote from one of those cities. This is from Flagstaff, Arizona. "This, being speculative commercial rezoning, is risky business for developers. The city of Flagstaff taxpayers and the neighbors in the vicinity of those areas to be rezoned. Developers would potentially be purchasing land that does not have adequate public infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater drainage, roads, fire, and police protection." The latter two do not apply to this section, "for the scope of development that they are planning. It's possible for their own protection. The city would require the developer to pay for maximum impacts to public infrastructure in a rezoning case. But what will likely happen is that the taxpayers will end up paying for public improvements for new development. How can taxpayers concerned about potential costs of infrastructure improvements make informed comments on this at a public meeting if they don't know what the use will be? The public would not know if the use will be noisy, toxic, or foul-smelling. They won't know how many employees to expect, hours of operation, or how much truck traffic will occur. Any policy directions from a regional plan would be strictly a conversation between area planning and the developer when the detailed plans are submitted at a later time. The public would be excluded from this conversation. The city of Flagstaff, Arizona, believes that public participation is a crucial part of ensuring that a regional plan impact is followed and the developmental process is followed as well. For a regional plan to be effective, we need to have a process that allows for conditional zoning. Both the developer and the public can then have a predictable outcome."
Thank you.
One quick response to that. I keep hearing speculative rezoning, and I guess, since I didn't, I couldn't say what it was going to be. I had to put that in petition. But I go back to the fact that if you go upstairs in our engineer's office, we have paid for plans and done studies and have shown that this is going to be a commercial area. They've started the infrastructure, as Ms. Dr. Biggs said, just east of his property, and it's going to go west. This isn't speculative. Our planning is that this is going to be commercial, and all my client wants to do is make it commercial. That's all.
Thank you. Close of public comment now. Counsel?
Mr. President. George, you've been on the council for a long time, like me, and I remember back when we were doing the Margaret Avenue corridor study and plan. And Mr. Shagley's assertion that this is going to be a commercial area is correct. But even way back then, Dr. Biggs was living at the house where he lives now, and Dr. Biggs was participating in this process. And it was always understood that there would be people living there until commercial, until the public infrastructure was finished, that brought, that made it possible to bring the commercial uses in. In my opinion, Mr. Shagley's clients have the cart before the horse. I have, I thought that last time you brought a speculative rezoning in this area to us, but I didn't voice that concern, mostly because Dr. Biggs and his neighbors weren't here. But in the face of a remonstrator, for me, this, it makes sense to turn this down and let the people who live there continue to live in the conditions that they're living in until the public infrastructure's developed to bring in the things that are going to change the whole area. I yield.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Counselperson Garrison?
Mr. President. I didn't realize that Dr. Biggs was going to be here today in opposition of this. Dr. Biggs and I have worked together at Union Medical Group and found you to be an excellent physician and leader at Union Medical Group. But because of that, and I'm employed at Union Health, Union Hospital, and Union Medical Group, I would respectfully request to abstain from this vote.
Understood. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselperson Garrison?
One of the issues that you raised, and I'm not completely sure it's properly one to consider tonight, but one of the issues that you raised, Dr. Biggs, was the issue of the water that's currently there not being adequate. And so it seems to me that if it's not adequate for you to buy, it's not even adequate for a residential use. So I guess that I would say that's a problem for whoever buys that property, whether it's zoned commercial or residential. And so that particular, I find it difficult to say I would deny zoning rechange based on that, because somebody is going to have to deal with that, and also this propane tank, even if they're buying that for residential use. So I don't see how it can be used right now for its intended use without those, or its currently zoned use, without those being taken care of. So I find that kind of an unpersuasive argument on this particular property. So I yield.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? If not, we need to take a, make a motion to vote to take action. Do we have that motion? Is there a vote to take action? Is there a vote to take action? Hearing none? Then this goes to next meeting. Is that correct? Okay. Do not act on this tonight. Thank you very much. Next item.
Special Ordinance 3, 2020. Rezoning the property located at 2160 Lafayette Avenue. The petitioner requested both area planning and city council table this until the April meetings, which ours would be April 2, 2020.
We still have to vote to take action to table, correct?
You have to vote to take action and then vote to table, yes.
Thank you. Counselperson Aller.
Sorry. I want to, okay, you passed it on to me. I'd like to take a vote to vote on Special Ordinance 3, 2020.
Second. Been moved by Counselperson Aller, seconded by Counselperson Garrison. We vote to take action on Special Ordinance 3? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, with the vote to action, and the action should be tabled. Counselperson Aller. Till April 2. Counselperson Aller.
I move that we table Special Ordinance 3, 2020, to 4 to 2020.
Second. Been moved by Counselperson Aller, seconded by Counselperson Garrison. Then we table Special Ordinance 3, 2020, to April 2, 2020. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Nation, you're on.
There really isn't anything else, right? Move to adjourn.
Been moved to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for being here.